Good evening and welcome. It is Monday, March the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. That is Pi Day, and I call to order the Planning Commission meeting for the city of Burnsville. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting is being held in person and virtually via Zoom. As Chair, I'll be leading the Planning Commission meeting, and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person or join us online with Zoom. If attendees experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting and then try rejoining. That usually has fixed the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate, plus all kinds of good information, located on our city's website, and that's burnsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is also available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you're unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you can either send your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. You may participate in tonight's online meeting by joining us on zoom.us/join and typing in this meeting ID nine four seven two zero zero seven three eight two three. Once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you're planning to speak to. You may also join us by calling into the meeting. That phone number is six five one three seven two eight two nine nine. Again, you would use the same meeting ID, which is nine four seven two zero zero seven three eight two three. For each public hearing, I will open up some time when callers can speak to that item, and we'll give you more instructions at that time. If you join by phone, your call will be muted until then, and please note there's going to be a slight delay due to technology. So if you're speaking by phone, please turn down the computer or mute the computer to help the delay. With that, all this information is, of course, also included on the website, burnsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. And now, let's move on to the agenda. We should have received a agenda through your packets this evening, or this this week. Any changes, commissioners? Any changes to staff?
No changes.
No changes. I would like a motion for the agenda, adopt the agenda. Commissioner Watt?
I move that we adopt agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Watt. Commissioner Wallace?
I'll second.
Because he can. Second by Commissioner Wallace. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none? That passes. That's great. You also should have received the meeting minutes. That was from February the twenty-eighth. Hopefully, you got a chance to look through them. Commissioners, did you see any changes you'd like to make? Staff?
No changes from staff.
Good deal. With that, I would take a motion. Commissioner Anderson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Moved by Commissioner Anderson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Timmerman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No one opposes? That brings us to number three on our agenda, and that is a public hearing. The application of the city of Burnsville for a zoning map amendment to rezone forty-one parcels of land in the Burnsville Center area and County Road forty-two retail corridor to the mixed-use zoning district and one parcel to the park district to align with the recent update to the two thousand and forty Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Here to speak to that is our city planner, Sarah Madden. Ms. Madden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. Planning Commission. I'm just getting the PowerPoint pulled up, sorry. So, the item tonight is related to something that has been discussed many times before the Planning Commission, other city commissions and the city council, which is related to the Center Village Vision implementation. So, before getting into the specific parcels that are being rezoned this evening, I'm going to just go through quick history for some of you who may not have been on the commission when some of these projects kicked off. And so, the Metropolitan Council is a kind of governing agency over the metropolitan area here in the Twin Cities. And one of the things that cities like Burnsville have to do is submit a comprehensive plan update generally every ten years. So, beginning in two thousand and sixteen, the city as a whole, but kind of spearheaded by planning staff here and consultants that we were working with, began the process of updating from the two thousand and thirty Comprehensive Plan to the two thousand and forty Comprehensive Plan. And that takes some time to work through, involves a lot of engagement, as well as just financial study, looking over previous plans to see like what maybe needs to be tuned or changed, or maybe there's new focus areas that we wanted to add. With the two thousand and forty update, one of the new focus areas that was added was the County Road forty-two retail corridor. So after kind of that period of study, we end up with what we have adopted today, which is the two thousand and forty Comprehensive Plan. So the Metropolitan Council did approve that in summer of two thousand and nineteen, and shortly after, the city council voted to adopt it. And so that is the Comprehensive Plan that is effect for Burnsville. What happened is during the review of the Comprehensive Plan, knowing what we had proposed and submitted to the Metropolitan Council, the city staff and additional consultant work began what we call now is the Center Village Vision. But when that process began, it was just knowing that we had submitted a draft comp plan with a focus area of the County Road forty-two retail area. We put out or began to study what was then called the County Road forty-two retail area. So, I guess I'll go back a little bit, but just to kind of go over the Comprehensive Plan, which I had mentioned, this is our long-term, city's very long-term goals, you know, two thousand and forty to be adopted in two thousand and nineteen, and the goals of for the city for two thousand and forty. It's a long-term vision for the city. And one of those small areas does become what you know as the Center Village area. So as part of what we knew we would be focusing on in the two thousand and forty Comprehensive Plan, the proposed future land use plan at that time showed the areas, including the Burnsville Center Mall itself, and those south of County Road forty-two, they were proposed to be reguided from a commercial land use to mixed-use land use. So that is part of what was adopted as part of the two thousand and nineteen adoption of the two thousand and forty Comprehensive Plan. While that was still pending and under review by the Metropolitan Council, the city began their separate Center Village Vision process. So that actually began, I believe, in summer two thousand and eighteen. So it was all kind of being reviewed at the same time. And one of the things that came out of the Center Village visioning process for this general retail area was that the area that we had identified in the two thousand and forty Comprehensive Plan for mixed use should actually be expanded to the retail corridor areas that are north of County Road forty-two. So, this is an excerpt from the adopted two thousand and forty Comprehensive Plan that kind of was the summary of what our new focus area would be and what we would go on to study. So looking into that Burnsville Center Mall and coming up with a market or development study of the area, such as what was done for some other malls in the region, and kind of create some best practices and explore the zoning that it could be, not just on the mall, but on the area outside it. So with the Center Village Vision, which some of you were able to kind of be a part of, is that went through in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, there were new goals for redevelopment of the retail area, both north and south of County Road forty-two, and kind of a new vision of what a neighborhood-style development could look like with mixed use in the area. So as I said earlier, the areas south of County Road forty-two were rezoned to mixed use after adoption of the Comprehensive Plan, but the areas north of County Road forty-two were not included in the focus area until staff and our consultants got further into that Center Village Vision study work. So as we're working on that from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen, the Comprehensive Plan is also under review at the same time. So there's a lot of studies that are going on. Outside of that, once the Comprehensive Plan was adopted in the summer of two thousand and nineteen, staff moved forward with the rezoning to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. So that was in December two thousand and nineteen. And we began the next sort of process, which you were maybe involved in, which was the Center Village Traffic Study, and something that just completed itself earlier in two thousand and twenty-one was a, what's called an Alternative Urban Area-Wide Review, which is essentially a kind of preemptive environmental impacts or other impacts review of the area. So there are a number of city studies that are related to this area that were all happening because they were recommendations of the previous studies, but also all happening kind of around the same time. So as part of this December two thousand and nineteen, where the approval of the mixed-use land use subject to Metropolitan Council approval, that is the specific item that is related to what we're looking at tonight. So as part of that northern part of the County Road forty-two retail area, in December two thousand and nineteen is the last time that that went before the Planning Commission for a public hearing. There were two years of study in between before the Metropolitan Council would finalize looking at the amendment to our Comprehensive Plan, because there was a lot of studying to be done related to the whole area, and we wanted to submit to them a complete package of the information. So once that was finalized in July, the Metropolitan Council, and some images, maybe I'm out of order here, of the areas, of the traffic study that was conducted in two thousand and twenty prior to some of those traffic impacts we saw as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, as well as the Alternative Urban Area-Wide Review, the A U A R, which is development scenarios showing those impacts of development on an area. So after that, the Metropolitan Council did approve our land use plan amendment from two thousand and nineteen, this past November of two thousand and twenty-one, and then that was adopted by the city council in December of two thousand and twenty-one. So that does bring us to the rezoning, that is the public hearing and the zoning amendment application. That's before you this evening. So the parcels that were proposed to be reguided to mixed-use land use had a period of study. They were adopted by the city council in December, and then this public hearing this evening is moving forward with the to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan changes that were made to the land use map, the zoning map amendment to follow. And so shown here is the existing zoning of the area, so highlighted here in the black bold line. So there are, and the darker red is B-three zoning, and there's a small area of B-two, which is neighborhood business zoning, so in B-three is a general business. And then there is some single-family zone property that is also part of the rezoning. This larger piece and the three hatched parcels are vacant land, and then there is one non-vacant parcel that is also included in it on the same block. So the proposed zoning for the area is mixed use. There is the carryover of those planned unit developments. So where you can see on the map that there's some cross-tached, as you can see, the majority of the area is planned unit development zoning. That carries over as the zoning for the site. The island of green that you can see here is the one parcel listed in the item's title, which is rezoned to park. This is the Fire Station One land, which of course has been relocated to another area of the city. And so this is proposed to be rezoned to park at this, as part of this action this evening. So the intent of the proposal before you this evening is to be consistent with the adopted land use plan with the two thousand and forty plan. So there are forty-one properties. It's approximately just under one hundred and ninety-two acres. And then one property, which is the former Fire Station One property, to be rezoned to Park District. The PUD zoning does carry forward with this area. And then just as a general engagement and notification process, since it had been some time since there was notification to these property owners since the last land use amendment, there was some outreach and a virtual open house for the property owners that are being rezoned, held at the end of February. So we did have one attendee at the virtual open house, and then kind of a number of phone calls with different property owners in the area, just asking about their PUD and how that would be affected moving forward. So with that, it is a public hearing this evening, but staffs recommending that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council approval of the proposed zoning map amendment and the ordinance for rezoning, which is included in your background packet as drafted and presented this evening. And I can stand for questions.
Perfect, thank you. Before we go to public hearing, I think we'll start with council, or, geez. Commissioners, do you have any questions from Ms. Madden concerning our rezoning of the mixed use? Seeing none? Okay. I know I was going to ask about the park area, so they're going to make that into a park? Is that the plan, or we are?
So, that's a great question. Right now, there is not an official plan or direction, but we received kind of some information about possibilities. And right now, the zoning is proposed to be park. That can change with the direction of the city council or any initiative. But right now, it is proposed to be rezoned to park. There are no formal directions or plans.
Okay. And then that that one space, it was R-one, I believe, up top there? Now, that looks like there's a street there. Is that a, or is that an non-existing street, one of those?
So the street is actually cut, it's only, it's basically a stub street. So it does access the one non-vacant parcel, but with the right-of-way does extend to the end of the block, but the street that is constructed itself is stubbed after the one occupied parcel.
And we're probably seeing a better use of that land being some type of a business?
So, with, there's been some engagement with this property owner, and in the past, there were PUD amendment proposals that came through, some I think as a sketch plan that never made it to full development application, and then maybe some that did make it to development application, which were for commercial-type uses. They didn't go through. Some of those uses were senior housing and other kind of assisted or long-term care facilities. So with that type of facility, it's still something that they would be able to apply for their PUD amendment when they maybe do decide to move forward with a development like that, like that was shown conceptually. But it is a planned unit development, so it would require an amendment before anything could be constructed at the site. Because it is, they're all vacant and owned by the same property owner.
Okay. And it's mixed use, so it could go either way, right?
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. With that, it is a public hearing. It is six forty-six. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anyone here in person can please step up to the podium, or we can take your phone calls or your Zoom. Just let the moderator know that you would like to speak to this issue, if that's the case. If you're on the phone, you dial star six to speak with the moderator. Last time I checked, there was nobody on Zoom. And... And it sounds like there is nobody on Zoom. Well, absolutely. Come on, step up. And please, we just asked that you state your name and address for the record.
Yep. Tracy Ingle, twenty-one hundred Friendship Lane. And I'm near that one property owner that has questions. And this is a first I've heard about any of this, and I live, like I said, on Friendship Lane, so that's right. We abut, we're kind of kitty-corner from that vacant or that single-family owner. And I guess, what are the next steps? Because like I said, we haven't heard anything about this, and I know some of the other family members on that street are also concerned with what the impacts are for our homes, as well as, you know, the community that we have established there at this point.
Great. So this is the final step in this study that has occurred. The last engagement that would have been, or any notification that would have been sent out, would have probably been in two thousand and nineteen related to, I'm not sure if you were here for the whole presentation, but when the studying was beginning for the land use change. This most recent time, the notification we had with the property owners themselves, we had extra, I guess, information that was sent out to them ahead of time. But otherwise, for this public hearing tonight, it was the standard three hundred and fifty feet notification, which would be you, I'm assuming, since you're near the property but not on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the last kind of larger engagement effort related to it was probably in two thousand and nineteen. But this is the last step of adopting the zoning to be consistent with the work that was already studied. I don't know if that helps answer your question. It may not be what...
Well, it does, but you know, I guess, you know, that's a long time. And if there was nothing done at that point, you know, I would have thought there would have been more notice, then all of a sudden, it's here for changing of the zoning.
I guess I don't have a solution for that part, yeah.
I'm the only one here. I know there was someone else that was going to come, but I don't think he was able to join. So, if, what can we as a community do if we do have concerns about the rezoning, or is it, are you saying it's too late?
I'm not saying that it's too late. I mean, you can always speak with me, so I'm kind of the staff person that's running the rezoning application part of it. And I can be happy to talk with you separately outside of the meeting. The, each of the properties that are being rezoned are a separate line item in the ordinance. So there are ways for moving around, maybe scheduling of certain items if you'd like to talk about them. And then the, I will say with the specific, with the larger vacant piece, so that is a planned unit development. There's nothing that's currently proposed on the site. The last time that I spoke with the property owner, there hasn't been necessarily momentum to move anything forward. Because it has that planned unit development on it, there will be, when it comes forward for development, whenever that may happen, there will be additional notification as part of the public process that they will have to go through in another hearing similar to this one with the actual plans of what they may be proposing associated with it. That would be for future projects, of course. For this one, though, I'm happy to talk with you more about it.
It would be nice if we would have an opportunity to kind of gather our thoughts and, you know, as kind of meet as neighbors and just share what our concerns are and what questions or comments and thoughts we would have.
Okay.
If we could hold off on moving forward with the rezoning at this point.
Yep, go ahead.
Something that could happen is if the other sites are amenable to Planning Commission to continue with those rezonings, but then hold up this one and continue it to allow for a neighborhood meeting or a neighborhood impact related to this site.
That would be helpful.
Yeah. I think you should also note that it's just rezoning. We're not necessarily going to build something there or anything that's coming in right away. However, I completely understand your concern. And I, you know, I was looking at it, and the reason I asked that question was wondering if any of the homeowners in that area were curious about that at all.
Yes, we are.
So I'm glad you stepped up and think, oh, I really appreciate you coming in tonight. That's... And absolutely, it would come before a public hearing like this. The whole neighborhood could be here. We've had that happen before. And let us know what you think. Ours is going to be a recommendation to the city council on what goes forward. So there's still going to be another step in this whole process as well. If you don't get your resolved, what we got going today. It would take one of the commissioners here to make a motion to separate that out as, as Ms. Garros was saying, so. I hope that helps.
That helps. And maybe, I think I got your card
Oh, okay.
out there, so we could also be in touch with you also.
Yes, absolutely.
Is that the best approach at this point?
That would be for to, for more discussion, and then otherwise, it's the decision of the Planning Commission for how they would vote and if they were to split.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Thank you for coming. I have a question for you. This is the opportunity. This is the public hearing. And so if you would share with the Planning Commission what your concerns are with the rezoning, we can take that into consideration for the decision that we're making tonight. The decision we're making tonight is, you know, frankly, based on information that we've been looking at for onward of four years, or nearly four years. And so, I mean, I will tell you that I'm prepared to accept the city staff's recommendation, but if you have some information you'd like to share during the public hearing, I'd really like to hear it too, though.
I guess, I haven't, we haven't really prepared our thoughts here a whole lot, but I guess, first of all, the impact of the property value and if it's a larger, like, townhomes. Did you say multifamily, multifamily or apart, would that include apartments, or is that...
It's a, it's a mixed use, so it could be businesses, it could be homes. Am I speaking out on that?
No, not speaking out of turn. As you're saying, with mixed use, there's kind of a variety of types of densities that it could be.
How large is the high?
The largest, the highest, that it could be a multifamily apartment building, that is something that is, would be a and a planned unit development amendment for whoever were to propose it on that vacant land. But that is something that it could be. The last concept that was talked about with this site in particular, it was maybe close to ten years ago, and it was related to a senior living type of facility.
And I think just the traffic flow going up and down that street, I mean, we've, there's been many times cars speed down there rather quickly. And so, traffic flow, impact of the property value, a lot more. What, what? What is the apartment? I mean, is it, is it going to be, you know, subsidized? Is it going to be low income? Is it going to be just standard housing? You know, I don't know. So, I mean, we've all lived there, most of us have lived there for quite a few years, so I guess, what, what type of impact will it be? I think when you bring multifamily apartments, that can draw your property value down, so.
You know, Chair.
Go ahead, yeah, absolutely.
This entire area has the, the real potential to bring your property value up significantly. I think that additional mixed use, additional businesses, additional people and development, and, I mean, the idea of this is not to draw anybody's property value down, and that's something that I think the city council, the Planning Commission, and the city staff all takes into consideration when they're looking at plans. I mean, what I want to tell you is that what we decide tonight isn't the end of your options. As Chair John said, you have an opportunity in two weeks to address the city council. I think it's very nice that city planner Mad, Madden? You know, provided you the opportunity to reach out to her directly. So I, I don't want to say, you know, whatever happens with our vote, I think it's good that you at least are starting to talk with it, with your neighbors about it. So thank you for coming.
And like I said, we haven't had a whole lot of opportunity to talk and gather our thoughts together. This is just off the...
And there's a lot of unknowns. I mean, apartment building or, or homes or whatever. I mean, it's speculative right now, so.
Could be quite a few different things, absolutely.
So there might not be answers to a lot of the questions you guys come up with, but I think it's great to, to know that you're going to be putting them together, and you have a great resource in Sarah.
And I do want to note that when development were to occur on the site, whether this rezoning happens or not, when they move forward, there would be another public review process as part of that, similar to maybe what you went through, if you lived in the neighborhood, as you were mentioning, when the senior living development was coming through. So that, a similar process to that would occur. When anything like that comes in, we do request traffic information from the developer, and it's reviewed by traffic engineers that the city consults with. When they come in, we look at those plans and impacts as part of the wholesome review, and some of that does include neighborhood meetings and, you know, what it takes to, to bring forward a proposal that we want to support to the city. So when that comes forward from the private sector, that would, it would still be a public process that you and your neighbors would have input in. Hope that helps.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We appreciate it. With that, anybody else that would like to speak on this issue is more than welcome to. The podium is open. I don't believe anybody else has joined us from Zoom. I'm going to double-check. Doesn't look like it. Well, it is six fifty-seven. I will close that public hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to commissioners if you have any questions for staff again, or if you want to make a motion or discuss this. Commissioner Timmerman?
Ms. Madden. So this goes to the city council in two weeks. What is the step beyond that, just to clarify? It has to go back to Matt Council for another look, or is this kind of the, really the last step?
This public hearing and then city council meeting is the last step, so it would be at city council next week for review.
Next week.
Yes. Commissioner Anderson?
I'm just kind of curious. The idea of switching it from general business to mixed use, is this more or less the idea to try to open up additional options of what can be there? I mean, is the goal to put things like, you know, apartments or senior living, or is that kind of like a goal to be able to maximize that space in that kind of regard? Or is it just, we would just want to make sure to have all the options open for, for new developers in the future?
That's a great question. Mixed use, the idea of increasing the number of acreage of mixed use that the city has is mainly about the wider variety of options. It does allow, I think, right now, the zoning district, as you know, we're kind of changing some of that, but the zoning district is, it's a conditional use for a mixed-use building that has residential and commercial in it. It is a conditional use permit. If it is a all multifamily building, that's kind of how the zoning district itself is set up. But as for the darker red area on your map and general business, from general business to mixed use is very, very similar. The key difference is some of that wider variety of uses. The setback standards are primarily the same. The green space requirements are primarily the same, and the building materials requirements, unless you are doing a multifamily building, are primarily the same. So a lot of the development standards that you'd see in our zoning code for those two districts are very similar. And then with the planned unit developments that are... are, uh, vast in this area, that's where some of those more specifics may come in about what uses, um, what height, what, uh, things like that are already kind of governed in a lot of these planned unit developments. So, that's all something that would be reviewed if they were to come forward. In the Center Village Vision, which talks about this area as a whole, there is a big focus on bringing more, um, rooftops to the area, and so there, there is a focus in that, um, for the Center Village area as a whole, um, primarily, and the reason why, um, the northern area was not included in the original update of the comprehensive plan is because the residential, or the idea that residential could be permitted, um, that was focused on the southern end. As you know, you know, living and shopping and working in Burnsville, um, this northern area for County Road 42 is primarily commercial retail, some office, um, but, uh, none of the land is vacant, it is, apart from the parcel that we were just speaking on, that is on that corner of, uh, County Road 5, um, but it's all built out, developed, um, a strong thriving retail area. So while it would open up options for uses and that multifamily and that mixed use building style, uh, would be, uh, available for a developer, it does have, you know, the built form that it currently is right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Chair, I do have another question.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Um, Ms. Madden, why didn't we consider the, uh, Speedway Super America parcel that's in gray now to connect the other red parcel that's zoned for mixed use?
Can you put up the proposed?
Yeah. What parcel are you referring to, I mean, possibly, are you talking about gray in this area?
Yep, those three gray properties.
Um, so this area, uh, there's actually a, it's a great question, I don't know if I'll be able to answer it wholly, um, as part of this, but this area, eh, is comp plan designated as limited business, it's, and so, it's a separate section of our comp plan that talks about as we move west down County Road 42, that, um, we focus on employment centers and limited business. So that is part of the reason, I believe that those parcels are the, I'm trying to think, one of them is, um, office warehouse, and, um.
Yeah, IHOP.
Is it IHOP? Okay, that's what I thought, right in front of it. And so, it, there is still business uses and, um, the, the brand new car wash and the, um, one of these parcels is a self-storage facility, so it is still business in a way, but, um, the comp plan, the way that it's described is that as we move down County Road 42 past 5, it specifically talks about that, that a limited business but focused on employment is a key focus in the comprehensive plan, and that was probably delineated in the comprehensive plan two updates ago, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to throw any wrenches in the, in the works tonight, but those current businesses seem to fit the mixed type of zoning and, you know, maybe for opportunities for those property owners down the road that could be looked at as well.
Anyone else, commissioners? Uh, one question, I was, was there a request from the property owner to include that parcel into this, um, space, or what, what drove that part of it? Was it, you'd mentioned that we've had other opportunities in that area.
Um, if you're mentioning the, the vacant piece, it was not a specific request, but it was, um, identified as an area that could have impact when looking at the traffic study of what could move forward based on the concepts that were seen before, um, and the compatible land use and zoning, um, based on what the, uh, I think it's technically, it has a vacant building on it, there's a former church building on the site, um, vacant for a number of years. We, as a staff, do entertain calls from people that may be interested in purchasing it, and knowing, um, kind of what the market demanded, that's why it was looked at in the traffic study and why it was looked at as part of the, um, sustainability environmental impacts of the A U A R, and kind of why it ended up, uh, in this and in the conference plan, yes, Deb?
Uh, in addition to that, um, we've got County Road 5 and County Road 42, and Dakota County, um, has control over access, and with McAndrews also being a county road, in the past, they have not been willing to provide, you know, a direct access, and it's too close to 42 and 5 for another stoplight, so, um, it's really thought of because you've got, um, commercial directly to the south, kind of a transition area between the commercial and the single-family residential and what could happen there. We have seen more, I think, more often residential, uh, type uses than strictly commercial just because of that access limitation.
When we say residential, we mean it has to be multifamily, it can't be a single-family home or anything along those lines of mixed use, right?
I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure about single-family homes in particular, um, mixed use has a wide density range for units per acre, um, but what, I would say that when we have heard about someone that may want to prepare a concept plan, um, primarily it's been a, maybe a medium-density residential as a transitionary area, or something like a senior, uh, living development, which is kind of a, a, in some areas are allowed in commercial zones, um, as a permitted use, so it's kind of a, a transitionary use is this generally what we've heard that someone may be interested in doing in the site, um, but as I was mentioning earlier, it's been a, a long time since, uh, someone has come forward with a development proposal on the property.
Yeah, to reiterate, if, if somebody did, it'd come before us again.
That's correct, it would.
It would be something we could, Ms. Engel could speak on and we could help.
That's correct, and then we would have the specifics on impacts, we would know specifically what was being built.
Right.
There are no proposals currently.
Perfect, thank you. Well, commissioners, uh, we've done some discussion here, unless somebody else has a discussion, I'd be willing to hear a motion. Commissioner Timmerman.
I was just opening my screen.
You raise your hand. You raise it off the desk, I need you to raise it.
I need to pull it up here.
Can you go back a screen?
Or do you mean to the?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I think this is an exciting area of the city, I'm concerned with certain areas, um, as well, that are so close to the residential, uh, I think that the, the church or church slash school or whatever had been in that area was kind of, um, I mean, it's blighted at this point, and it needs some refreshing, um, so I think that we can probably come up with something over the, the short to medium range that'll work in that area, and with that, I would, uh, make a motion to recommend the city council approval of the proposed zoning map that Ms. Madden so eloquently presented this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Timmerman, Timmerman, Commissioner Timmerman has made a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Wallace?
I'll second the motion.
All right, seconded by Commissioner Wallace, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? It is unanimous, that means it will be on the consent agenda on Tuesday, March the 22nd for the city council, and it'll be at 5:30 in these very chambers. Thanks again, Ms. Madden. Moving on to the next public hearing, we have an application for 2100 Frontage Road LLC for Conditional Use Permit Amendment, Concept and Development Stage Planned Unit Development for an outdoor storage lot, rezoning it from B4 Highway Commercial to B4 PUD, preliminary and final plat of a one-lot commercial plat of Ivy Brook Parking East located on the 3.6 acre site at the northeast corner of Oliver Avenue South and Highway 13 Frontage Road North, I feel like there should have been a period in there somewhere. Here to present is another one of our great planning managers, Deb Geros. It is a long one.
Thank you, commissioners, yes, lots happening on this site, uh, lots has happened in the past, and, uh, and then, um, we have a, an application, uh, the applicant is here this evening, we've got, uh, Trevor, uh, Punai who's here, and then also the engineer, uh, for the project, which is, um, Eric Meyer, so if there are any questions of the applicant, uh, they are here. In terms of the subject site, there are two parcels that are out there, the southern parcel actually was platted back in the late 1970s, both parcels have been used for, uh, what used to be the Family Funways Amusement Park for years, years, and years, like from the, I think, early 1980s, um, probably to almost late, late 1990s. The subject site, considering two, the two parcels, is 3.6 acres, uh, the zoning, the south part of the site received, um, CUP and PUD approval, um, for part of the Family Funways project, the north part of the site is just zoned B4, which is highway commercial. So the, and the land uses, they are in the Minnesota River quadrant. In terms of the site itself, uh, there are frontages on both Oliver Avenue South, which is on the west side, and then, uh, the Highway 13 Frontage Road, which is on the south, and then up through part of the east side of the site. So what the applicant would like to do is, um, we are looking at terminating the previous CUP and PUD approvals, anything related to Family Funways, um, just to basically clean up the, uh, the history of the site and, and the parcel. Uh, and then, in this case, um, there's a PUD to allow a screening fence with slats, um, you could do that with a CUP, but since we're proposing, um, or recommending the entire site be PUD, um, that would just be included with the PUD, uh, and then rezoning the entire site to B4 Planned Unit Development, and then Concept and Development Stage PUD for an outdoor storage use, this is very similar to the use, um, that you looked at several months ago along, um, South Cross and County Road 5, and, uh, so they are looking basically to have the site for development for, uh, storage type use for, uh, commercial vehicles, commercial equipment, and recreational vehicles, and, uh, some, um, low, uh, storage of, um, just exterior material items. The site does have an existing building on it, that building was approved many years ago, um, basically as a temporary building for, um, a place that they could sell tickets from, uh, was intended to be movable, so temporary, uh, it's been there a long, long time, uh, long after, uh, the park closed, uh, in 2006, uh, there was a, um, uh, case file taken out because the building was just in disrepair, it had holes in the roof, and, uh, basically looked like a very, very in need of shed, uh, type of facility, so the owner at the time did, uh, clean it up and, uh, resided it, and it's looked much better since, I don't think it's ever been occupied, however, uh, since that time. The existing conditions, there was an ALTA survey that was provided, and probably the major thing to note about the site is just the extent of the, uh, existing utility easements on it, uh, they are all over the place, makes development of the site, um, really difficult. This graphic just shows, uh, in general, the black line is the south property line, and then everything in, uh, kind of that orangey-yellow are existing, um, easements over the property. So the building does encroach, uh, into, um, one of the easements, the applicant has been requested to provide, um, written documentation from the easement holder, which would be, in this case, I believe, NSP, uh, to allow, you know, them to do their use, they're not moving the building, they're not increasing the size of the building, uh, it just stays in, in that particular location. The single, uh, line here to the north is actually a Metropolitan Council Interceptor Sewer, very big sewer serving the region, um, also, we've got the overhead power lines, uh, so again, regional, large facilities, uh, really, uh, encumber the, the property. On this graphic, this shows the, um, location of various utility lines, uh, maybe a little bit difficult to see, but on the south, we've got, uh, the pink color are the overhead, uh, power lines that run through there, this green is the interceptor, and then, uh, there are also a number of others, a little bit more difficult to tell, but there are a number of right-of-way easements along the southern part of the property too. The thing that I wanted to show for a planning commission is that the site has lost land, uh, if you will, over the years through takings for the, uh, various road improvements, and most recently, the 2013 County Road 5, uh, Highway 13 Interchange Project, and this just shows the left is the existing condition, and the right is, uh, what they had before that, uh, project was done. There is a vacant piece of property just on the northeast part, or northeast of the site, and that's owned by the state of Minnesota, uh, along with this piece across the Frontage Road, and, uh, we have, we understand that they are looking at potentially turning that back for development, uh, that and some additional properties associated with this project, or I mean, this area of the city. So the proposal basically is to, um, to create the exterior storage lot, uh, which is shown, there are three accesses that are proposed, two on Oliver Avenue, and then this one that is across from the, um, Burnsville Motors site, uh, so there would be three total accesses to the property, uh, basically looking at, uh, there are existing towers for the electrical, uh, power lines, uh, this is one, and then this is the second one here, uh, so you've got those areas, and they're trying to develop to the extent they can, uh, within, within these various easements. They do have one sign that's proposed, it's a freestanding sign, uh, at about this location here, um, they have a lot of signage that's available to the site because the building actually has three frontages that can count for signage, um, the height of a freestanding sign that they can have is up to 18 feet, there is a requirement for a 20-foot setback, though, from the property line, uh, and then a five-foot setback from the closest driveway or parking space, um, so those we have included as, uh, conditions that they meet those. The signage is just a little bit over, um, the 50 square feet that's allowed for a freestanding sign, uh, so they would just need to look at reducing that, which could be done, basically just, you know, a little bit of modification of the, of the sign, so should not be an issue for them. What this graphic shows is trying to enlarge the site plan a little bit more so that, uh, you can see it, basically, the area that's shown in this kind of pink or light purple color, that is the proposed screening fence, uh, it's proposed to be a six-foot tall, uh, chain link fence with slats, that does require either a CUP or in this case, a PUD to do that, so that surrounds, uh, the site. The area in yellow is where their proposed, um, trash area is, uh, and then this is the existing building, and then the area in light green, there are a few locations where surmountable curb is proposed, generally, you need to have a barrier curb, uh, you know, like the 612 type curb, as opposed to surmountable is more the flat type curb, so in these locations, uh, they're proposing to have that surmountable or flat, uh, type curb, and that, that would need to be approved by the city engineer, so we've included a condition. In addition to that, there are three snow storage areas, uh, one is located, uh, on the east side of the site, approximately at this area, and it's between the parking lot and the fence. If we go to the next one, this is the southerly part of the site, uh, same things, and then there are two additional snow storage areas, uh, that are indicated in these locations as well. As far as the development summary, um, the project is, uh, being proposed, our staff is recommending a planned unit development, um, they, the site, um, is currently 3.6 acres, after it's platted, it'll be about 3.5 acres, and they are dedicating about, uh, 0.7 acres on the south for road right-of-way. The building will remain the same size, 937 square feet, the impervious surface that is proposed, uh, would go to 76%, and, um, this would require, uh, PUD deviation to allow 24% overall green space as opposed to 25%, and staff is recommending approval of that. There's a section, or several sections in the zoning ordinance that allow, when you have a situation where there have been land takings for public improvements, that, um, certain considerations can be granted, um, green space is one, setbacks are other, the only thing that they need is 1% less green space than the ordinance. They are, um, actually proposing to provide more green space within the parking or storage area, uh, 3% is the standard. Three percent is the standard, they have five point five percent, so that is something that offsets that deviation. They're also proposing more building perimeter landscaping, fifty-nine versus fifty percent. And the parking for the project, they would be required to have sixty-three stalls, they're providing ninety-seven. So in terms of the benefits, we have more green space in the parking area, more perimeter landscaping, the proposed building materials, and the amount of windows, they have windows proposed on all four sides of the building, those exceed our requirements, and even some of the standards in the architectural tool. So those are things that are then considered as offsets for what's requested for the PUD deviation. Let's see here. They're plating the property, so we will obtain the right-of-way that's needed, and easements. And as far as the building options for the site, this site is really, really not developable for the most part, for most things. Maybe you could have a car storage lot there, you might be able to have a car wash, but not very many things, so this is actually a good use for the property. The deviations, we talked about the green space deviations, they're also requesting a deviation for light pole height. Light poles usually are not allowed to be taller than the principal building. We've got an existing building on this site that's about eighteen, eighteen and a half feet tall, and this site also is right next to Highway thirteen, so there are a lot of higher, taller facilities in the area, and they're proposing, I believe, three, three different parking lot lighting poles, and staff feels that what they're requesting is reasonable. As far as the demo plan, you can see from the aerial photos, there's a lot of areas kind of broken up, previous blacktop, so they'll be taking that out and putting in new blacktop where needed, and then repaving the entire, the entire storage area. Terms of grading and erosion control, the property is relatively flat, so there's not a whole lot of change that's going to take place in the elevations, primarily here on the easterly part of the property, and then the site will be graded, so that they get their stormwater drainage off the property. As far as utilities, the only utilities involved in this plant are the private utilities that they're bringing to the site, so there are no public municipal utilities that are proposed. Terms of the preliminary plat, we'll end up with a three point five acre, basically commercial plat, easements and right-of-way provided. There will not be a park dedication for this site, because what they're, they're not expanding the use of the site. The building is staying the same size, so no park dedication is required for this site per the city engineer. And then we have the final plat. And as far as the building itself, they're looking at upgrading it significantly from the exterior, adding cultured stone base at the bottom of all four sides of the building. They have both a mix of vertical and horizontal metal panel siding that's proposed, a darker metal coping and trim, and then the windows on all four sides of the building. Terms of the floor plan, not a lot to demo. From the left, there was not a whole lot there. On the right, what will, what they will have are three offices, you know, reception area, bathrooms, and some utility area. For the landscape plan, something that is kind of unique with this, too, it's a huge site, but again, when you're looking at landscaping, when you've got utility corridors that include pipelines and power lines, those get to be extracted or credited, if you will. So there is really not that much area to base what is required for plantings. They are proposing, I believe, eighteen? Sixteen? Can't quote, can't quite add. Their proposal does meet the ordinance. The other difficulty about this is, again, you have those easements, and then with the plat, they have drainage and utility easements that'll be provided along the property lines. Doesn't give you a whole lot of area for planting space, so they're doing what they can, and the area of green space within the parking area is this large area, and through here, there will be green space. Basically, your standard screening fence, and they did provide these section details to give you an idea of what the view would be, you know, as you're looking across the street to the site, what you'll see. So you will be able to see the top of the truck trailers, but other, other types of equipment and exterior storage, with a condition that they not exceed the height of the screening And with that, the staff is recommending approval. There are fourteen conditions, several of those are related to what the city attorney recommends we do when we are looking to remove former PUDs, CUPs. So number one is the developer applicant applied to rezone the property and agrees to repeal the previous CUPs and PUDs related to the amusement park. And then we indicate the specific, specific cases and approval dates that would be repealed. The use of the surmountable curb, or that flat curb, is subject to approval of the city engineer. The plans should be revised to provide a parking, let me show you this. In this area here, the ordinance does require at the end of parking rows to have a planter island, so this should have a planter island located in here, and there generally then, there's a size specification that we included, which is the minimum requirement, and then planted with an overstory tree, shrubs, and perennials. Materials for the approved storage are limited to the commercial recreational vehicles, equipment, and light materials. They shall not exceed the height of the screening. Sign permit will be needed, and then we included the plans to modify the sign accordingly, so it meets the ordinance and the setbacks. And then written permission from any utility easement holder, depending on where these facilities are, that they have the approval to do that. They have provided information from Center Point, that they're okay with, with the project as proposed, and we did receive word back from MINDOT, and they have no issues with the proposal either. And then the city engineer has some minor conditions outlined in their report, basically related to grading permits, those types of things. There will need to be a lid, management practice agreement. Basically, the stormwater from this site will be treated to, in a larger pond for yellow freight, which is more of a regional type pond to the northeast. This is within the drinking water overlay area, so they are lined at detention ponds, because water can't get down into the soil, because we're trying to protect our drinking water supply. And then a city permit will be needed to work within the right-of-way, and yeah, and the last one is written permission from Excel for any improvements that are proposed. So with that, I will address questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gero. I see that Sarah Lloyd with our engineering department is here. Welcome, Sarah.
Good evening, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for city staff? Commissioner Wallace?
Yes, Ms. Gero, so thank you for your presentation. As a former teenager, you used to be on go-karts back in the day. I agree, this is definitely a unique property to be able to develop at all, so it is nice to see something come of this vacant lot. My only concern that I have is with the fence height, right across from Burnsville Motors there, it's a pretty sharp turn, and just with that fence setback, is that enough to just still be able to have that line of sight? Plus, they also have an entrance and exit on that corner as well.
Yes, we have worked with them, they are providing, there is a site triangle area that is in this part of the site, and that landscaping and signage has been removed from that, so that provides that here. And then the city engineer has reviewed this access, so in terms of the location of the fence, generally up to the driveway, if there's any site considerations, they may need to shorten that a bit, either way, but in general, they have found that this is, is the place to have the crossing.
Okay, and thank you for that additional information.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, I also remember that amusement park and those go-karts were a lot of fun when I was younger as well. I had a couple of questions, I was kind of curious. First and foremost, those power lines, which, like you're saying, definitely make it very hard to develop that area, and how high up are those? Because it looked like the sign was going to be directly underneath it.
Oh, I don't know offhand.
Significantly higher than what any proposal for that said.
Thirty, you know, forty feet, I don't know if.
When I saw that sign, I was like, I swear, it looks like the power line is going directly above it, so I wanted to make.
No, their, their sign is, they can have up to an eighteen-foot sign, but theirs is, you know, a little over eight feet, eight and a half feet.
Oh, okay.
So should not be any issues.
Good, just, I wanted to be one hundred percent on that. And then if it's kind of a storage location, and I know that, that sewer line that goes directly underneath it, you'd mentioned, was that, that lid that you're talking about at the end, kind of designed for the, making sure that there's no, you know, guidance to make sure there's no possibility that things that are being stored there could leak into the ground and get into that sewer line or anything like that?
They did provide a drinking water protection worksheet, so the materials that they are proposing do not have issues. They are actually providing stormwater treatment, if I can find it here. Just want to give you an idea. The stormwater management basically is going to take the stormwater from the site, and it'll be directed up to this larger pond. It's actually a built detention pond, and they have the specifics on that as part of their utility plan. And I would let, probably let the applicant's engineer discuss, you know, in details for you more than that, and then we have our city engineer that can respond as well.
Happy to expand on that. So the lid is for the stormwater management, again, for that regional pond, and then there's also some stormwater management along the west side of the site, infiltration area that has an underdrain in it, so that will capture the water, so since we are in that drinking water overlay area. And then I believe the sewer that you were talking about is that Metropolitan Council sewer line that goes across the property, that is not a part of the lid, that is just within an easement for, for Met Council to access that line if they need to. So two separate things, the sanitary sewer line is not a part of the lid.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Watt.
Thank you, excellent presentation, I think it's a great use for this, this piece of property. Why a surmountable curb in some spots and not others? Do you know what the, what the reason for requesting that is?
Yes, the, let's see if I can find the right one here.
It was just on this, just on the side at, on Oliver, right?
Yeah, what they're looking at is to have, yeah, there are three areas that are looking at surmountable curb. It's the green kind of line located on the north side of this slide, and then in a couple of locations in this area, and those are proposed for water to drain off the site in those particular locations, and those are in the locations where there are going to be, I believe, the catchment areas that are proposed for the stormwater management.
Okay, so it's more about getting the water off the pavement than it is driving over the curb?
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense. I have another question. You said that this property, it has ninety-seven parking stalls, and there's, which is greater than the sixty-three stalls required?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So what's like, it's like a parking lot, so there's, how do we, I'm just curious, how do you get to sixty-three required stalls?
Sure, the ordinance has a standard requiring so many stalls per two thousand square feet of the storage area.
Got it.
So we took that, and then in addition to the office uses, the, actually, the building only creates demand for five parking spaces.
Right.
But it's the two thousand square feet that gets to that.
The storage area.
Yep.
That totally makes sense.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? I know the applicant is here, I would love to have the applicant come speak with us before I open up a public hearing, if they'd be so willing. If you could just please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Trevor Panai, from Prior Lake, one forty-one ninety-eight McKenna Road Northwest, Prior Lake, Minnesota, five five three seven two. Thanks for having me.
Thanks for, thanks for coming in. Tell us a little bit about your company, I was curious.
Sure.
It looks like a truck stop of some sort, almost?
Yeah, not quite a truck stop, so it's an outdoor storage business, essentially. In twenty twenty, June twenty-sixth of twenty twenty, I bought my first one in Savage, right on Highway thirteen, right behind Marty's Auto, kind of near Borri Trucks. Yeah, so I, you know, had that, I bought that facility and kind of, you know, redesigned it and just kind of cleaned it up. It was a grandfathered in property, but it was kind of in disrepair, so made it look nice and reorganized the whole thing, you know, made the city happy there. Then I, and that's basically a semi-truck parking lot, right? So all these on-the-road truckers, they're, they're gone for two, three, four weeks at a time, and, but they live locally, right? So when they come back home, they need someplace to park, and as you know, with the city ordinances and whatnot, you can no longer park on residential streets, and it's getting a little more tough, right? So the demand for, you know, centralized and safe and secure parking spaces, for especially commercial trucks, that need a lot of space to maneuver around, it's, it's pretty high in demand, and there's honestly a shortage of that. That's what you've seen with Stagecoach, he's, you know, I know him, I know pretty well, he's, he's another company that does something similar. So, so that was my first property, I developed another one in New Prague recently, last summer. You know, so I went through the same process with the city commission and the mayor and whatnot, and that went well, developed a fourteen-acre site, and that's a little more, that has a little more variety, that has, you know, boats, RVs, char industries, you know, big public company. Next to that site, they rent, you know, a few acres from us, so that has semi-trucks, boats, RVs, char, there's two billboards, that has everything, plus two buildings on it. My next one, and you guys will hear about this probably in the next, I believe, the next city meeting, is my Bourne Transportation, where it says Schmidt Roofing, on Highway thirteen, I bought, purchased that one in December sixth. That's just, you know, it was already, it already has a condition use permit for truck parking, but Bourne Transportation didn't really need it anymore, so I purchased that for them, pretty much kept everything the same, just cleaned it up, united it up, and, you know, eventually later on, in the coming weeks, we'll propose to expand the lot towards the back and the north, just make some simple changes, just to maximize the amount of space. And this one I've been working on for quite a while, since, you know, it's a little complicated, it's in, covered it with easements, and, you know, a lot of back and forth between the sellers and, you know, engineering plans and whatnot, but I think we finally have it to a stage where, you know, I think it's, it'll look really good and provide a good service to all the truckers in the community, and, you know, be safe, secure, and keep the trucks off the streets.
Are you from the area?
Yeah, from Prior Lake.
Did you remember it as amusement park at all?
No, no, I'm a lot younger than that, yeah.
Wow.
I'd like to make a bullshit.
My dad might have, I mean, my dad's my business partner, so he might have, but I, you know, I don't remember it all.
You do realize that if we do make this happen, we're going to lose that light, amusement park designation, and be able to put a roller coaster or anything?
I'll find another property, I'll do it.
You'll be okay? Okay. Well, I have to tell you, this is one of the most blight properties in the city of Burnsville that I've, I've seen.
Right.
And I couldn't believe that something so perfect could come in to move into that location, so personally, I want to thank you so much.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity, yeah.
Building that, being able to recondition that building would be, is great, and to find a good use for that property.
Sure.
Outstanding, so thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Appreciate you coming up as well. With that, it is a public hearing, I will open it up, it is seven thirty-nine. Anyone wishing to speak to this item can step up to the podium, otherwise, if you're on Zoom, you can speak to the moderator, let him know that you would like to speak on this issue, and if you would, contact us by phone, star six, and tell the moderator you want to speak to this issue. And it looks like there is nobody on Zoom. I don't believe anybody's coming up to the podium, so I will close the public hearing at seven thirty-nine. I was going to wait until seven forty, but that's okay. With that, I am going to throw it back to our commissioners. With that, I am going to throw it back to our commissioners on any discussions, motions or anything on those lines. Commissioner Timmerman?
Uh, I think it's a cool project. I didn't have any questions. I remember the amusement park. That's all I have to say. I'm, I mean, this is great. Good job. You found a niche. I think that, um, you found an idea, keep running with it. Um, I used to call it Junie's Rides, cause my babysitter, when I was three years old, took me there. And I still to this day drive by it and think, oh, that's where Junie's Rides was. So I'd like to see a roller coaster, but I think this is a nice use of the property, so, well done.
Commissioner Watt?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, Commissioner Watt, you're more than welcome to.
Okay. And yeah, I had a lot of fun racing go-karts there. I move that we, uh, recommended the city council approval of the application to remove the former CUP approvals for the site, approve the concept and development stage PUD to allow a new storage, new outdoor storage lot for commercial vehicles, recreational vehicles, equipment and light materials. Approve rezoning of the entire site to B-four slash PUD and approve the preliminary and final plat of Ivy Brook Parking East, subject to the numerous conditions listed.
Fourteen.
Commissioner Wallace?
I'll second.
All right, we had a motion by Commissioner Watt, seconded by Commissioner Wallace. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none. It will end up on the consent agenda Tuesday, March the twenty-second at five-thirty in these very chambers. Thank you so much for coming in and thank you for, um, speaking to us about your business. That was, that was really nice. With that, our next item, speaking of city council. Our, uh, city council liaison, Kara Schultz, is with us tonight. And she is here to speak with us on any issues, questions or concerns we have or any other information that we'd like to get from city council. And I will start with you, Councilmember Schultz, if you have any comments you'd like to make before we ask your questions.
Not a problem. Um, you know, this is just our time to check in and make sure that you guys are getting what you need, um, the information that you need to be able to do your job. Also for you to be able to ask any questions of me over, um, anything you're seeing on the trajectory of the council on any particular issues or, um, anything you're wondering about or that type of thing. So I will immediately lob the ball into your court.
There it is. Commissioners, any questions for Councilmember Schultz? Commissioner Timmerman?
You know I'm gonna ask questions. Um, so city council looked at some, um, budget projections last week at a session, work session?
Yes.
And I'm curious what.
You're gonna make me cry.
No, no. I didn't watch it. I didn't, I haven't talked to anybody about it. I just saw that it was discussed and there were some interesting projections. I'm just curious what your take is on that, how that might affect like the zoning project? Or not the zoning projects, the entire.
City code.
City code rewrite, um, and, and some of these things. I mean, the reason I thought of it is because we had a resident asking about property values. And I thought, well, typically those are really important to us. So I'm, I'm just kind of curious if you have any information to share with us and how it might impact us going forward.
Absolutely. Uh, so on your, on your code review, um, that really shouldn't impact you all too much. Um, the, the direction that we're heading is the one that we're, we're still full speed ahead on. Um, you know, we do want to encourage you again, um, as I did when, when this first came up, uh, that this is a time for you all to not just be looking at wordsmithing or simplifying. This really is your once-in-a-lifetime chance within this city to make an impact that's going to last for decades. Do not worry about being too bold or pushing things too far, because it comes to us. And then we take a look at it. So we need you to push the envelope as hard as you can, so that when it comes to us, we can then look at it in a holistic manner. If you don't push the envelope as far as you can, that's when you get individual city council members having to do that on their own. So, you know, have no fears on that, like, go, go, go. Um, the budget, yes. So what we're looking at is we are looking at several years of proposed five-point-seven percent, um, levy increases. But then we are looking at a twenty-three percent levy increase. Uh, reason being, we have some funds that are coming in that like chop off, right? And then you're left with that. So, um, yes, when we have property values increasing, um, that does bring in more revenue without raising the levy, right? Everyone's happy, their property, you know, value is higher, that's all good. Um, we are also having redevelopment and hopefully in the future we'll see even more redevelopment. Um, and that also, um, a lot of times when there's that type of redevelopment, that, that piece of property then becomes much more valuable as well. Or in some cases, it might be subdivided or, or it could be pushed together. Um, so, you know, there's a lot of movement on that. So, you know, since we are really landlocked, that's the direction we need to go. So what we're looking for is, is for you all to kind of bird dog ways that our redevelopment can move forward, right? Um, so if you have suggestions, if someone is coming before you and how things are presently is not conducive towards having some of that redevelopment happen, um, you can put the suggestion forward to council to look at something, reevaluate, or just take special notice of something. We do look to you to give us those suggestions because you guys are the ones that first see it. Well, other than staff. I mean, staff gets first crack, right? And then, and then it's, it's you guys, then you see it. Um, so, you know, we're really looking for you to be extremely active partners in that for our, our future. Um, so what does that, that mean for the, the city in general? I, you know, in general, when we're looking at this type of, of budgeting situation, um, you know, you have two things. You have level of services and staffing and everything that goes with it. And then you have revenue. They gotta match. If there's a mismatch, you have to figure it out one way or another. And that means you're either going to raise taxes, um, or you may have redevelopment at such a level that that's, that's, you know, cushioned and isn't so drastic. Um, or you're gonna be doing things like reducing services and that type of thing. And that is a, that is a decision that is wider than just city council. That is a decision for our residents as well to really weigh in on. Um, so that's, in a nutshell, how that's going to affect things and what we're looking to you to help us with.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, commissioners? I know there was a, there was a, a couple of weeks ago, we had a study on the heart of the city area. They're talking about signages and, um, different things. Are, are we looking at things like that? Or have you discussed that at all, some of those results?
Yes, but preliminary. So, I mean, we're just, we're just really kind of getting back into, into some of those things. And, and some of those type items are going to be taken up by our citizens' code review, because it may fall into those specific little pockets of area. And so they'll make their suggestions. So we have those two parallel groups. So, um, city council is, is, um, being patient while those things are being, being worked through. We're not known for patience, so, you know.
To note, you said that, we did not. Just for the record.
Yes. I, I, I own it. I have no patience. Zero, zero. I'm always like, no, no, no.
Right now?
Yeah. I know, I'm like, why? Why can't we do that? And staff is like, um, I can give you eight reasons. Like Kara, I can give you eight reasons, so, yeah.
Off the brakes.
Takes time.
Exactly.
I have another question. Sorry for the rip from the headlines questions, but, um, the, oh my gosh, now I'm drawing a blank. What was the most recent article that I read? Um, I had it and I lost it.
That the Burnsville Girls Hockey won the consolation tournament.
That's huge.
That is correct. They did. They went there and kicked butt, yes.
I know what it was. Park dedication fees.
Yes.
Um, you know, as you said, ringing the bell, ringing the alarm. I mean, that's something we do sometimes with our own dissenting votes. And I did that a couple of weeks ago with an issue regarding a park dedication fee. I was not aware at the time that the city of Burnsville was involved with some litigation.
Yes.
I, after reading the article, I realized that pieces were falling together and I knew bits and pieces. Um, but I, I'm curious, if we're successful in that area, uh, is, is that something I, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I feel like the project a couple of weeks ago and maybe the project tonight are areas where in the past, maybe we would have sought the park dedication fee. Um, I, I guess what's our timeline on learning more about the appeal on that? And finalization? And then, um, you know, obviously the results of that, um, will determine a lot of what we can do and potentially what other cities can do. But I guess, are, are we talking at all about changes? Or are we kind of in a, a holding pattern until we know final results?
Yeah, we're, we're in a holding pattern. Um, so the, the, um, the lawsuit that we were in, um, that ended up being a, uh, like a published opinion, which means it is precedent-setting. And it was pretty far-reaching. Like it was a slap. You, you can't interpret it as anything other than, than a sharp slap. Um, we are attempting to appeal it to the Minnesota Supreme Court, but they do not have to take it. I suspect they will, mainly because, yes, it was a hard slap, it was published. You know, it was meant to get people's attention, right? So, um, how it was worded was, was definitely meant to do that. And it affects, since it's published, not just Burnsville, the state, like everyone in the state. Um, so I do suspect that they will take it up. Um, but that timeline is their timeline. Uh, I would think it would be not drug out, but I also know that the courts are extremely backed up. Extremely backed up. Litigation that normally would have, would have been seen in six to eight months is projected out two to three years. So I simply don't know. Now, I do know with Minnesota's Supreme Court, they have a little bit more rigid timelines on that. I do not know the exact timeline for that, but we can get that information for you. But yes, we and every other city are interested in the results of that. And it will have an impact.
Ms. Mann?
Oh, I just wanted to note that we are still planning on having kind of a park dedication, informational, educational discussion item at a future planning commission meeting when we can fit it in, when we have a short enough timeline at a meeting.
Based on current parameters?
Based on current parameters, yes. Just more basics, history information, since it's mainly an engineering-related topic, engineering of parks that we see a lot at the planning commission. It's not something, um, that we get into much detail on. So we are still planning on trying to give at least a little bit more background information about why, where and what. So that's all. Thanks.
Good deal. Any other questions, commissioners? Councilmember Schultz, thank you so much for coming in and enlightening us with your great knowledge and, uh, answering our questions. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely. No, we, we have, um, great appreciation for the work that you guys put in. I, I know our residents, um, see you a couple of times a month doing this. Uh, but the amount of work that our planning commissioners put in, uh, far outreaches these evenings. You all do put in a lot of time researching things, getting information, talking it over with staff. Um, and then even after the meeting, looking things back over, preparing for the next one. So I do want to extend our appreciation for the work that you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And that brings us to updates. Commissioners, any updates? Seeing none, I turn to staff. Staffing updates?
Uh, the only update that I have is our next, uh, planning commission meeting will be canceled. Um, we don't have any development applications. So we'll be working on the zoning ordinance a lot. Uh, so your next meeting will be April eleventh.
Okay. All right, April eleventh will be our next meeting. That means this meeting is coming to a close. Wow, Commissioner Wallace?
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace. Commissioner Watt?
I'll second that motion.
A motion was made by Commissioner Wallace, seconded by Commissioner Watt. All in favor of adjourning at seven-fifty-five? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, that is it. Thank you so much for joining us. Have a great night.